All right, thank you. So the public is invited to call 603-766-5646, participant code 685562. If you wish to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting, please wait for the chair's instructions and then press star. Your microphone will be unmuted and you'll be directed to state your name and address prior to making your public comment. You could also email your public comment to denise.moran@saun19.org prior to 3 o'clock of the meeting date. In the subject line, please indicate "Public Comment", "Today's Date: Goffstown School Board Meeting." Please include your name and address and limit your comments to no more than 500 words. The board reserves the right to read your public comment during the meeting, however, any public comment will be included in the official meeting minutes. I do have two board members on the phone. When I say your name, if you can just hear it here and alone. Dan Cludier?
I am present and alone.
Thank you, and Janelle O'Brien?
I'm here and alone.
Thank you, Janelle. So first on our agenda, we have two meetings minutes to approve. The first one is the Goffstown School Board Public Hearing from December 21st. So moved by Ellen, do I have a second? By Terry, did anybody see anything? All right, seeing none, I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Jenny? Yes, for the amount of time that I was there. Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. The next one is for the actual school board meeting on December 21st, 2020. So moved by Ellen, do I have a second? By Retta, anybody see anything? All right, seeing none, I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we're unanimous. Correspondence?
Just one thing, we typically used to send around a lot of pictures and information from social media. Mrs. Moran captured these, I thought they were awesome. Mr. Lindano and Mr. Brooks from Maple Ave took full advantage of the snowy weather to provide some creative outdoor lessons. They, students made exciting sled runs and music, they participated in seasoning, in singing seasonal songs, and then had a candy cane hunt. So there were a few photos of this, I think it was on Facebook.
Yes, it was.
Just great to see, and we feel badly we can't kind of pass all the paper around as much as we used to, but lots of great things are still happening and there was still a lot of fun and excitement before Christmas and people really looking forward to the break, so those were a couple of neat things that were happening over at Maple Ave.
Good, thank you. Accommodations, good news. Caleb?
I'd just like to start by commending the maintenance staff who've just done a fantastic job through the entire year, allowing us to still remain open, which I'm sure everyone appreciates.
Yes.
The break, as you know, since the last meeting, we were on winter break. Welcome respite for all of the teachers and students, and we're just now getting back into doing things. Winter sports has started up and they're following the COVID guidelines very well, it's been handled very safely. I believe the Performing Arts Department has begun practicing for their winter musical. My contacts have not yet confirmed with me, but it's about this time that they usually do, so I believe they are.
Awesome, thank you Caleb.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Jenny?
Yeah, I thought that the little, I don't know what to call it, that Mountain View got together of the Christmas lights sighting and the list that they had of places.
Oh, the driving around town?
Yes.
Yes.
It was really kind of a cool thing because, you know, people don't know where to go necessarily, where the lights are, and I think it was kind of a cute community.
They did a couple of neat little things like that.
Oh, yes, they have, they have, and I know my granddaughter's still wanting to go see the house with the dancing lights.
Right.
But, you know, it's ongoing, and I know in our neighborhood, there was some gorgeous lit up houses too, so it was fun to be able to find them and go to them and know it was still in the community.
Right.
Also, I just have to say, I've been seeing on Facebook a couple of names consistently of people that are going out of their way to help, and that's Diane Makem, who every Friday is doing the food baskets, and Joan Stevens seems to always be working with the food pantry, so kudos to them for helping the kids.
Thank you.
And just a word about the Goffstown network, the food pantry, they have been such incredible partners for us. You think about in the beginning of the pandemic, before we had some of the federal relief that we were able to offer with free meals and some of those things, Diane has just been an incredible champion to make sure that our kids are being taken care of, our community is being taken care of, and really, we can't thank them enough.
And I'm impressed, it seems like if anyone has a need, like someone's kind of down on their luck and there aren't many Christmas presents coming to their house, if they put it out, it seems like everyone is all over it, and so I think our community is awesome as a matter of fact, just to come out and help those around them, so.
Right, thank you, Janelle. Anybody else? Yes, Scott?
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, maybe tag along what you said about, Caleb, about the maintenance staff done a fantastic job. Last week was Butch Kamasha's last day, he retired. And Butch, as you know, he'd be in here oftentimes after your meetings, so Butch, I believe, also turned 80, so he worked a really long time. And so they had a nice little socially-distanced going away, and I didn't share this with you, Brian, but I took the liberty of, in honor of Butch, I wore suspenders that day to the...
But to be true Butch, you have to wear suspenders and a belt.
And a belt, and I did, I did.
Butch is double, double protection.
And I did, I did honor that, Brian. No pictures were taken, obviously.
You can't mention Butch without mentioning his wife, who also, you know, worked for us for many, many years. Wonderful people, hard, hard workers, incredibly dedicated to the community, so as is often the case, Caleb is exactly on point.
Yep.
Exactly. Great people.
Thank you, anybody else? Accommodations, good news? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Is there anybody on?
No.
All right, next is committee reports. Scott, you have the manifest.
Sure, we have a manifest for this evening in the amount of $1,451,188.2, of which your payroll taxes and benefits are $1,075,979.39. Special ed activity, there wasn't a whole lot for this particular manifest totaling almost $34,000. And in your general expenses, you're just going to see a ton of things that were grant-related, so a lot of these were part of the CARES Act grant or others. So the first one was Pelmac Industries, this was for access controls, and that was that PSIF grant that you accepted and signed off at your last meeting. Wally Computer Associates, this is the Sonic Firewall, also grant-funded, this gives us a lot, extra protection of intruders to our systems. O'Sullivan Flooring, we had a water loss, this was, I don't know, six or seven months ago, and the insurance, Primex, covered that, so they're going to be reimbursing us that amount of money. Home Depot Pro, again, we bought an additional auto scrubbers as well as more of those electrostatic sprayers, the handhelds, again, so we can effectuate more timely cleaning. E+ Technology, these were more soft phone licenses that we purchased, they're changing those over to more of an annual service, and Steve, he got some more, so these are just for the lifetime now, these are perpetual, and he wanted to do that before this year started because now those soft phone licenses are on an annual basis, so that was a smart move on his part. Dead River was your propane at almost $16,000. Amazon was a combination of school supplies but also some grant-funded equipment. And lastly, Clean Air, almost $7,000, that was for, we bought some PPE, again, that's also part of that grant. And last but not least, for your food service, those were food and commodities purchased by the Food Service Department, almost $8,000. So are there, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to respond.
Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Scott. So for the E+ Technology, we said that that's going to be an annual fee moving forward. Is it going to be the same, $21,306?
No, I need to restate that, if I may. The soft phone licenses that we have now are more or less perpetual, meaning that for the life of the product, we're good, we don't have to buy more licenses. Had we not done that, anytime that we wanted to add an additional 10 licenses, we'd have to do it on an annual yearly, you know, service-type contract, so what we did is we bought it for the lifetime of the product.
If I may follow?
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
So this is just a one and done?
It's a one and done.
We have enough to cover future growth of any faculty or administration?
He bought more, capacity-wise?
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Oh, go ahead, Terry.
Scott, what, first question, the manifest you provided in December, you had three dates referenced under the payroll and payroll taxes.
Yep.
So that was, that was three pay periods, or?
No, it just, yeah, well, it could be multiple pay periods. Sometimes if we void checks or if we have to issue a check due to a certain circumstance, because it's part of payroll, we, I would put those in there. It's sort of aligns.
All right, I was just looking at the delta between the two, and then on the, sorry, second.
No, go ahead.
The retirement contributions, there was nothing for this month, is that capped or tapped out?
Not necessarily for the month.
Or for the time period.
It's for this particular two-week time period, right?
Okay.
Yeah. So you'll see that from time to time where one manifest, you'll have it on there, the next manifest, it'll be zero.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, so I'll need a motion. So moved by Ellen, do I have a second? By Jenny, you have a question, or you're second?
I'm second.
Okay, Jenny's second. All right, so for the discussion, I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, so we're unanimous.
Heather, I just wanted to, it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to give the board an update. I'm sure you have all heard that Congress approved and the president signed off on that stimulus package, and there will be another round of federal funding for education that will go to New Hampshire. That monies will then get divided up amongst the local school districts, but it's fair enough to say that it will be quite a bit more than what we received the last time around. So last time around, Goffstown received a little over $276,000 under Esser Cares. My initial reading of things is that it'll be at least three to four times that amount when the time comes, and there's a longer.
Spending time?
Period time, right. It goes till September 2022.
Oh, wow.
So that's when it can be spent by, so I just wanted to at least give you that update. And once we get more information, it might be two or three months from now, we'll let, we'll fill you in, but there is more relief in terms of that comment.
Good, thank you, Scott. All right, Budget Committee, Jared?
No further meetings have occurred since our December meeting for Budget Committee. As stated in our agenda, we do have a public hearing next Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. I asked the school administration and faculty to potentially communicate this out, whether it's on school billboards, you know, in front of the schools, saying that we have a public hearing, really trying to drive any further conversation that we can have about approving our budget and making sure that we get the word out of what our budget actually entails.
Thank you, Jared. Heather?
Yes, go ahead, Alan.
Are we all coming here for this remote?
No, it's remote.
So this is a Budget Committee hearing that we're able to be members of the public and call into from a public perspective, but any discussion at the budget level, I, of course, will be on that representative.
So we'll all get an invite, probably WebEx, because it's a town side?
No. No, you'll be part of what's called the conference bridge, the call-in piece. So members of, Jared is the school board's rep to the Budget Committee, he will be part of, it'll be a Zoom meeting, actually, so he'll be part of that Zoom meeting, but anyone who, anyone else who's not on the Budget Committee, who is not, you know, more or less affiliated, so school board members, select board, they will all have to call in, just like the regular public would.
And that's why I'm asking the faculty and staff to try to put out that public conference bridge, so that all of us, as well as all of our public individuals, know that they need, they should call into that or use that for...
And how will we all know the number to call and the meeting number and all that?
We'll make sure we send it to the school board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
It's the same as the one that you have for your meetings now, just so you know, because we're using the schools one.
All right, so you're all set, Jared?
Yep.
All right, Policy Review. We have not met since the beginning of December, we have a meeting on January 25th at 5:30 at the SAU right now, that's where it's at. And further on, we have second reads to do, if that's not today. C and E, Jenny?
C and E has not met either, and our next meeting is the 25th of January at 7:00 p.m. at the SAU as well.
All right, P and C?
P and C has not met since our last meeting, and just a reminder that this committee's meeting as needed, and it will likely not be until after elections when we start talking about volunteer appreciation and teacher appreciation.
Okay. All right, thank you. Retta? All right, the next is the SAU 19 Joint Area Meeting. We have a meeting next Monday, January 11th at 6:00 p.m. We are thinking of doing that remote, is that okay, Jenny and Dan? Because this is just a subcommittee.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Jenny, is that good? Okay, so that'll be Monday, the 11th at 6:00, and that'll be a Zoom.
Okay, it's just a subcommittee, it's not the board.
It's just a subcommittee, right.
Okay.
All right, Superintendent Report?
Thank you. So just a few follow-ups before I talk about some of the COVID numbers. I had mentioned at our last meeting that we are seeing an increase in some of our online course enrollment. I, again, just want to reiterate, at this point, we're looking at posting for and hiring for two online teaching positions. We've had vacancies that we've been unable to fill in some of our science areas, so we'll come back with a full accounting, but I did want you to know that we're going forward, posting, advertising for those positions, because we have sections that we need to increase, we need to add more course offerings for some of our kids. So that's in process. We will be meeting, our next meeting, our legislators, members of the General Court will be joining us, so I think from, at this point, I've heard from Senator DeLisandro, and I think either two or three of our state reps who will be with us, so we'll look forward to a spirited conversation with them. And also, in terms of the legislature and the process, the bills all have LSR numbers now, they're in the process of being assigned to committee. We do expect a lot of activity around education and bills associated with public education, so anytime you go from a democratically-controlled body to a Republican or vice versa, there's, you know, legislation that maybe hasn't seen committee access in a while, so we do expect it'll be a busy time. One of the things I wanted to bring to the board for your consideration, the FF-CRA, which is the federal law, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, expired at the end of June. There were leave provisions within that federal law that change some of our processes, so I wanted to inquire with the board, we will have people that we will be processing for unpaid leave, and in the past, pre-pandemic, that would go through a process that I would evaluate it, and then I would bring it to you as part of staffing and make a recommendation, and the board would make a motion to approve or not approve a leave. Would it be the board's pleasure to continue to do that process, or would you like us to notify you that we've approved different forms of unpaid leave? There will be benefit implications, so if someone shifts from full-time, 100% full-time equivalency, what we call like 1.0, to part-time, there are implications for benefits, so I just wanted to inquire, Mrs. McGrath and I were talking about this today, and I wanted to run it past the board to see what your pleasure is, whether you'd like me to just kind of go through the process as we did it before, bring it to you for your approvals, or for us to process and approve and then notify you.
Go ahead, Jenny.
Do you think any of the new federal money that's coming through could be used so that we could continue the process of funded COVID leave?
This is a little different, this is leave for people whose kids are remote and they need to be out of work because their kids are in a remote environment, you know, think about a neighboring community that's been closed. So it has nothing to do with quarantining, you know, some of those leave provisions, we will absolutely take care of that. This would mostly be for unpaid leave requests. So in the FF-CRA, people got a percentage of their pay as part of that program, even if they were on leave, so that's what's changing. So we'll, we'll still, you know, make sure that we're taking care of our people, but this is no different than if someone asks for unpaid leave outside of the scope of the pandemic at this point. I just didn't know if your preference would be for...
Alan, Heather, hand up.
I'm okay with the board granting the administration the okay to the approvals and whatnot, and just informing the board. Do we need a motion on that, or?
What is everybody? A consensus?
I would think that from a motion standpoint, that's already embedded in the superintendent emergency powers that we give. I'm of the same mind as Ellen, that notification, I think, is fine for those issues, and if there is a member of the faculty that wants to bring it to us, they could always have that, right? You know.
Hand up?
Yep, go ahead, Dan.
So if I'm understanding Brian correctly, prior to the pandemic, that was something that required or had board action, is that accurate?
Yes.
Then the reason we're going back to it, or would go back to it, is because the law that kind of took it away was enacted, and that law is no longer in play?
Correct.
Then my view, would we go back to what we were doing before? We were doing it for a reason, and I would like to explore the reason why we would do it before we changed to something when the circumstances weren't returning.
Okay.
Did I make that clear, or is that confusing?
I understand it, go ahead, Jenny.
Do we see that law coming back with the new administration, do you believe?
I'm not sure, and it's not part of the new, the new $900 billion bill that, the omnibus budget COVID relief bill that passed.
So this was part of the old?
This was part of the Esser Cares, the FF-CRA was leave protections. And I really have no, I don't really have a strong opinion either way. We're going to process them out of my office and out of the HR department anyhow, it's just a function of whether we say, okay, we're recommending this, or we're not recommending this, and we'll bring it to the board on this date. It really makes no difference to me. I just want to make sure I'm processing it consistent with the board's wishes.
So anybody?
Is there a?
Go ahead, Dan.
Now, do we have a, do we have a policy surrounding this? Because it's our job to hire and fire, to give the final say on that base, and we usually go for the recommendation. I would rather still stay in the process where personnel, final decisions are the board's decisions, and this would be a decision of the board. That's what we do.
Right. Anybody else object, or do you want to just keep it the way it was, or?
I would think that would be an awful lot of things coming to the board of kind of personal decisions.
It's mainly going to be limited to unpaid leave at this point, so if someone is requesting an unpaid leave, under the FF-CRA, those were leaves that were granted, but they weren't unpaid, now they're shifting to unpaid. So again, it's just a, whatever the direction of the board that you'd like to go, it really makes no difference to me.
Does, do we need a motion?
Well, we need to make a decision whether we want Brian to change it or not.
I'm just asking you to make that decision, do we want a motion to vote, or?
If you, if you made a motion and voted on it, that would, that would be the decision of the board, so either way, again, it makes no difference to me.
Then I'll move that we allow the administration to make the decision and notify the board.
Thank you, Alan, do I have a second? Go ahead, Jenny?
Second.
You're second?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
I do have...
Only, my hand is raised when you're ready.
Yep, hang on one second, go ahead, Jenny.
I do have concern, though, if before these were paid and now they're not, the same conditions stand, are we going to lose personnel that, I mean, our faculty need to be with their families, COVID cases are increasing, schools are going to be closing, is this going to be a staffing issue with unpaid, now unpaid leave for these people?
I think this is mainly going to affect our support staff, that's what we're anticipating, that, that some of our support staff may choose to take the leave unpaid, we do not anticipate that happening to the same degree with professional staff. So this was a federal benefit that was part of that FF-CRA, it certainly had its place, it also had its challenges, because people were able to elect to take leave and be compensated at about, was it Scott, about 60-something percent of their pay?
Yeah, it was 2/3.
Yeah, so, I mean, there, in many ways, there were incentives for people to be out on leave, which made it more difficult for us to run the schools, so...
We got a credit, too, tax credit, now there's no tax credit, so there's no, for the employer's perspective, there was a slight benefit in terms of that legislation, but since it's expired, if you were to do that, you'd be not only paying the employee, but then paying for their replacement. So that's the challenge, it's, I do hear you, but...
But the other thing is, is we're going to have...
As an employer, it's a tough one to swallow.
But then we'll have faculty that are worried about their kids at home, so, yeah, it's not a good, not a good all the way around.
No, and again, this, you know, there are lots of challenging, complex decisions, you know, throughout this process. This is a tough one, because, you know, we want to take care of our employees, we want them to be able to take care of their families, but we've got schools to run, we've got business to continue, we've got, you know, a big system with 600 employees that we're trying to continue to move forward, so...
Yeah, okay.
There are pros and cons, I would say, certainly to Jared's point, that if there were issues with faculty, those could be addressed on an individual-type basis, but, you know, Kate has done a magnificent job processing these, keeping everything straight. With the expiration of the FF-CRA, you know, I don't know that we're in a position to give a benefit that is beyond the scope of our union contracts, state law or federal law, although I'm sympathetic to anyone with young kids that they're struggling to take care of, or a family member, or whatever their unique circumstances are.
So Dan, I know you had your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, just the discussion that we've had over the last two, three minutes have nothing to do with this particular motion, correct? Yes, because this motion has nothing to do with paying or not paying. It has to do with whether or not the school board, because now that some of the pandemic legislation is going away, if we vote for this, we are not returning to the way things were before. We're creating a new paradigm, and I haven't heard anybody's reason to why we're creating a new paradigm, so I don't know how I can vote for this.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Yeah, and it concerns me, what happens the next time one of the COVID things go away? Are we going to be giving away some of our other authority? We're giving away our authority, and I want to know why.
Ms. Chair, is there a timeline?
Thank you.
For this motion? Because I know that we mentioned it as part of the emergency powers, would this just be kind of enrolled into the emergency powers of the superintendent, or do we need to put a actual end date for this motion based on what Dan has said, which I do believe he has a valid concern?
Yeah.
So I'd like to understand that determination before we vote.
What do you think, Brian?
Well, I would say the emergency authorization that the board has given me, I have used incredibly judiciously, I've always informed you when, when decisions have been made that were time-sensitive, anything that I can bring to you like this, I do, so I really have no preference. no preference. I definitely see Dan's point, but I also think that there's, you know, a lot of this is going to be informational to you anyhow. I mean, if someone is asking for a leave, an unpaid leave, and the board were to deny it, that person's not coming back. So if someone's at the point that they're asking for an unpaid leave, chances are if the board were not to support that, they're not going to return anyhow. But again, I really don't have a preference. I just wanted to make sure as we're, this is a new process given the expiration of the federal statute. So we just wanted to make sure it was consistent with the board's wishes.
Alan, I saw your hand up.
How would the board feel if I asked to amend my motion to authorize this as long as the emergency powers continues, the board continues to authorize those powers?
To the next successful board meeting? That's what we do?
Well, as long as those powers are given or granted, this goes with it.
You second that? Ginny?
I second that, yeah.
Okay.
All right. So any others? Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. I was just wondering, did I hear Ellen correctly? So the motion is now limiting the timeframe for which this authorization is being allowed?
Yes, and as long as the emergency one is going.
Okay, so we can tie it to the emergency line?
Yes.
Okay, that's fair. I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any other discussion before I do roll call?
Oh, yes, Rheta.
And can I just ask, so when the emergency authorization ends, then it reverts back to what we had in place before, and we won't have to vote on it again?
Like, that's, yeah, that's how I see it.
And I love the idea of the emergency authorization ending.
Yes.
For the record.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yep.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So just to move quickly through the updates on our COVID numbers, this is my variables-to-move-between-the-phases document. So I'll just, and Dan and Janelle, I sent this to you as an email, so you guys should have this. I wanted to first start talking about the vaccine. So I'm really pleased and greatly appreciative of our two fire chiefs in Goffstown and New Boston, Chief Allard and Chief McDonald. We have been able to get our school nurses enrolled in Phase 1A of the vaccine rollout, so that's really great. Educators are supposed to be part of Phase 2. So teachers, administrators, all of us who work in schools are supposed to be part of Phase 2. That's incredibly optimistic. I think that's really good for all of our collective health. But I want the board to understand, this does not involve vaccinating children. So as of right now, there are no approvals. The Pfizer vaccine has been approved for 16-plus, and the Moderna is 18-plus. There have been no trials and there are no authorizations for anyone younger than 16. So I just want to say it's going to be great to start getting the adults, the teachers, the educators vaccinated. Some of our older high school kids, our juniors and seniors, will be able to get vaccinated. I'm hoping, we haven't heard, but we're hoping that they're going to be one of the early priorities. And certainly, college kids, I'm hoping, are going to be part of this. But as of right now, I have not heard anyone talking about any kind of a plan for vaccine trials and FDA approvals for anyone younger than 16. So this continues to just be something that we want to get back to normal. We want to have all of our kids back in school. And until we're able to start to see some of these things like the vaccine, that continues to be problematic for me. Active cases, I think, you know, just going through this quickly, I think everybody knows the state of the state. 6,096 active cases, 593 per 100,000, 8.7% positivity rating, 650 per 100,000 in Hillsborough County, that was actually down a little bit, 111 in Goffstown, that's up a little bit, 16 active in New Boston, that's down a little bit. So we're starting to see a little bit of a fluctuation. If you look at some of the information, either from the state, from the Department of Health and Human Services, or from Johns Hopkins, New Hampshire had a peak, it went down, and it looks like it's either starting to go back up or, so there has been a reduction overall, which I think is positive. Our workforce and staffing, this is one of the things that I've continued to say is probably my greatest concern, is having enough people to be able to keep our schools open in the hybrid model. When you look at this, this includes the month of December now. So you've seen this for September, October, and November. Now we've added December. December was a challenge for us. It was a real challenge. What you're looking at is the delta between the gray line and the orange line. So the orange line is our subs needed. Our gray line is how many subs we were able to fill. So this delta, this gap between the orange line and the gray line continues to be problematic, and you can see it grew last month. So last month, we needed 303 subs filled. We only filled 144. Where did those people come from? It came from people doubling up. It came from administrators covering classes. It came from some of us covering lunch duties, and it came from a lot of places. But we are and continue to be extremely tight in our staffing. This is even more concerning. Here's our support staff. You can see here that this delta grew even more. So this is substitute for paras or some of our other support staff. The gap got bigger. So I do want the board to recognize that staffing continues to be an incredible challenge for us. We've heard that this is part of the reason that other school districts have chosen to go full remote. I've shown you this data every month, so we're tracking and monitoring this on a very diligent basis. So I want you to know, it's not just a willy-nilly, we don't have enough staffing, you know, we have the days, we have the numbers, I have the data. New Boston has experienced a little less. This does not include December for New Boston, so you've seen this already before. So their numbers are certainly not as bad. And now, I'm going to shift and show you on our website, we added a process over vacation to report a positive case that proved to be a really good idea. We had almost 30 that we processed since vacation. So if I come down here and click on the active and reported cases, you can then go in and look at the summary data. This is what the state provides to you. If you go to school dashboard through DHHS, only their numbers are all wrong. They're not even remotely close, and you can't look at them and have any confidence in the data that's being presented, unfortunately. This is updated every single day by MC mainly and our school nurses, who transition from active cases to recovered cases. So in total, we've had 108, which is a lot. And then if I go back, sorry, and look at the case data, so this is the same 108. So what we do is we track every single case that we've had. And this shows, if you go all the way back up to the top, it shows the school year, the event number, the date of notification, the location, the cohort number, the number of students excluded. So this would be the numbers for quarantine. The good news is, is if you look at the quarantine, you can see that we had a lot, that we didn't have to do any contact tracing. So even though we had the better part of 20-plus over vacation week, we actually, with the exception of Christmas Day, that took some, you can see Christmas Day, we had some contact tracing right in here that we were doing. But for the most part, people had been out. So again, I really appreciate if there's a positive family member, that people are keeping kids out, they're making good decisions. We've had a few instances that kids were sent to school who had positive family members, but they've been the rare outliers. So I think people have done a really good job. So, you know, again, the numbers continue, but it's fine. It's kind of like a process that we've gotten pretty good at. And unfortunately, you know, this is a necessary way for us to keep our schools open. You know, the only alternative is you go full remote, and then you don't have to do any of this. But again, as I've said many, many times, I don't think that's what's in the best interest of kids or families. So that would be it for my update.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Ellen.
Excuse me, Brian. Once the vaccine is available and those adults can go get it, why wouldn't we open schools completely?
Well...
I understand children can still get it, but the adults get vaccinated. Why shouldn't we open schools?
Well, I think we're going to have to look for some guidance from public health on this. But you're going to still have the potential transmissibility between children.
Yeah.
And if you remove social distancing, you're increasing the likelihood that you would have school-based spread. So I do think we're going to need to think about this. It's still, I think some of the science, I'm not really clear on. The recommendations have been that after you get the vaccine and you get both installments of the vaccine, that you still need to wear a mask because you could still be a spreader, even if you don't get symptoms yourself. So we're going to have to, you know, continue to learn about this as we go. I do think, Ellen, I think the rollout of the vaccine has been slower than expected. They have not, the state has not received as many doses as they were promised. They've not been able to get as many people vaccinated as part of Phase 1A as they wanted as quickly. What they're doing is there are 13 fixed locations that people as part of 1A, and I think Phase 2 will be similar to that, that you can go, you can make an appointment online, you go, you get your shot, then you follow up and get your second shot.
Did you talk about interstate?
Yes.
Okay.
And unfortunately, the closest one for us is Hooks It. But they're also, the state has subbed out the process of doing long-term care facilities. Those are being done by some of the local pharmacies. But, you know, it certainly appears that the vaccine, and again, everything can be politicized, but certainly educators being able to get the vaccine is a good thing. So we want to support that. I do hope teachers and support staff take advantage of getting the vaccine. I know that there's been a lot of talk about people that don't trust it, that aren't going to get the vaccine. But, you know, in the interest of everyone's individual and collective public health, I do hope that is the case. I'm planning on getting it as soon as, I'm not going to skip over anyone in line, but if and when I'm able to get it as part of Phase 2 as an educator, I'm going to get it. I'm out in the schools every day, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're moving into old business. The first is the Parks and Rec proposal. So it was sent to us. I hope everybody took some time to read through because we do need to make a decision tonight. Does anybody have questions if you read through it?
And I did want to share, if I may, that Mr. Willhelmy, the Parks and Rec director, volunteered to come here. We told him we didn't think that was necessary. Mr. Gross can get him to call in if the board has any questions for him. So we wanted to save him venturing out and having to come to a meeting, but he is available if the board has questions.
So I read through it. I felt that he did a nice job explaining stuff. I just want to make sure, been there, done rec ball for many, many years. I know they're limiting how many people come in, but I know they also said nobody's allowed up in the hilltop. I'm hoping that that will be enforced because everybody goes up to the hilltop and plays on the stage and plays basketball. I'm hoping all the doors in the schools are locked for all the corridor doors and that they're only allowed to be in the gym. That's my only concern, that there's a lot of volunteers, parents. And Rick and Aaron are responsible for making sure everything is enforced. Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, just to give you a little peace of mind, that, in speaking with Rick, he's abundantly aware of that, and I trust that Parks and Rec will comply with that. The other thing, as you know, we do have security cameras that record what's going on in hallways and the hilltop, et cetera. So it is not difficult for the school administration and staff to spot check, to ensure that's the case. And I think that kind of keeps everybody, you know, making sure that we're complying.
Right.
So I think Rick is, Rick and his team are well aware of that. They're doing everything possible to make this work for the kids in the community.
Yeah, I thought it was a very well-thought-out proposal. He didn't leave anything out, so I thank him for doing this. Does anybody have any questions, Rheta?
Yeah. In one of the items, it looks like the Rec Director is going to be in charge of contact tracing. And I'm wondering to what extent he's been trained in doing this. I know for the school system, the MC went through some trace, you know, it's a responsibility to do that.
It is. And we'd be happy to direct him to some resources that are free. We had people that did the Johns Hopkins contact tracing course. It's free. It's six hours or something like that, and it's easy enough for them to go through and do. But we're also, Mrs. Kohler helped write this proposal with Mr. Willhelmy, so we're going to take, you know, these are all our kids.
Yeah.
So we'll help them if they need help. And in terms of the access to other parts of the school, I guess I would say just, it's going to be a deal breaker. If they can't corral people and keep them where they need to be, then they're going to, you know, we would probably give them a kind reminder, but, you know, I don't, I can't have people unsupervised in that building.
Right.
So they're going to have to make sure that they're ensuring compliance with their parents and families.
Right. And it's just middle school kids. It's not elementary.
And it's just our kids.
Right.
So it's not even, you know, this isn't kids from other schools and...
Right.
Kids from other towns. It's just our kids.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, so if we're...
Heather?
Dan, yes, go ahead.
Yeah. In one of the sections, it says spectator, singular. In another section, it, so I can't believe there's only one spectator. It's not clear to me who spectator is.
Well, I read that a spectator is a guardian or parent of the child, and only one is allowed.
Yeah. That's my understanding. Dan, is that it's one?
Her player. And they can't enter the building until 10 minutes before the game starts.
Okay. But the kids can go in 20 minutes before the game starts?
20 minutes, correct.
And the locker rooms are only used for...
Bathroom.
For toilets?
Yeah.
Right.
No changing.
Right.
And the athletes are only MVMS students?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And there's cleaning schedules, and nobody can bring in their own balls. Everything will be provided by the Rec Department. Go ahead, Ginny.
I just feel more comfortable bringing this up. I'm sure that it's gone over, but the coaches will be people that in their normal life adhere to COVID safety measures, I would hope?
I would certainly expect that.
Okay.
Their parent volunteers.
I do want to be clear, we're not going to oversee this program, though. So I think if there were concerns that were brought to me, we would address them. If there were concerns that are brought to Mrs. Kohler, the principal, we would address them. But, you know, making sure that they're doing what they need to be doing, that they're following their own plan, we're not going to be, we're not going to be monitoring that. But I'm quite sure we would hear about it.
I'm just thinking, usually people, if they believe in something, then they usually make sure that their team follows the rules better than people that don't really believe in it. That's my only point.
Yeah.
Right. Well, there's no practices. It's just game time, and the games are an hour long. This is just rec. So, but it all, they are parent volunteers, and it says that he will train, talk to them, go through all the procedures, protocols, and enforce it.
Okay.
So. So if everybody has nothing else discuss, if we're going to approve this, we need a motion.
I move to approve the Parks and Rec proposal for basketball, Matt and you.
And do I have a second?
A second.
By Ginny. Any other discussion before I do roll call? All right. See you none? Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. So thank Rick.
We sure will. Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have second reads to move forward. So the first one, DFA, we did last time because that was just an annual review. So then we had DA F4.
Do you want to do these one at a time, Heather?
Uh, we probably should because I have a feeling there's going to be some discussion.
Okay.
With some of them.
Okay.
So it gives everybody an opportunity.
Okay, I'm going to move approval of policy DA F4.
All right, I have a motion by Ellen. Do I have a second? By Ginny, does anybody have any questions, discussions before we move this policy forward? All right, seeing none. I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Heather, yes. We're unanimous. Next one is DGA. That was authorized signatures.
DGA, I have a different one in my packet.
Hi, this is Janelle.
Hi, Janelle.
I just had a question real quick.
Sure, go ahead.
I was just wondering, right, like almost the last paragraph, I got to read the last. It says, "Another duly authorized signer lives in the building." I was just wondering, I think somebody said, I just can't remember if somebody could clarify who that might be.
And you said that was on DGA?
DGA, authorized signatures.
Yeah.
And it, we, in the blue.
Oh, there it is. Yep.
Ran the last sentence.
Yep, I see it.
So I can respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
This primarily would be the high school because they have by far, like they have 90% of all student activity funds, in terms of the amounts here in this building. The school principal, as you know, is Mr. McBride. The other duly authorized signers, these are people that have authority through TD Bank, is Kim McCann and Kevin Farley. So those are the two others. So that if Mr. McBride was not here, then Kim can sign the check. If both Kim and Frank are not here, then Frank, then Kevin Farley could sign checks. But for the most part, I would say 95% of the time, Frank is signing these checks.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you for the clarification.
I'm sorry?
She said, "Thank you."
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay. All right, anybody else have any questions, comments on this? So I'll need a motion to move.
Move to approve DGA.
All right, I have a motion by Ellen. Do I have a second? Jared, are you second? I give a question.
A question before we move on, if we could, Ms. Chair.
Okay.
Just looking at the second to last paragraph, I believe, "Will acquire the signature of the school district treasurer or deputy treasurer if circumstances warranted." Is that currently Dan Cludier, and who is the deputy?
Yes, Dan is the deputy currently.
Dan is the deputy.
Oh, Dan's the deputy.
Yeah, Lissa Winrow is your treasurer.
Thank you.
And Dan is the deputy.
Thank you.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? By Ginny. Any other conversation on this before I do roll call? All right, seeing none. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. All right, the next one is DGBA. This was for the credit card increase.
Move to approve policy G, uh, DJB-A.
Thank you, Ellen. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Rheta, second. Any other discussion or questions?
I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Janelle.
I'm just curious, towards the end, I believe it's three to the left. Um, DGA, urgent purchase, where, what urgent purchase would be, it's in red. All right, it's in the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down, in the red. I'm just curious, limits may be temporarily increased, but superintendent, supervisor, urgent purchase. I'm just curious, so are there any examples of what an urgent purchase may be?
You could have a server that goes down that costs a lot of money. You could have a boiler that you need to order something, you know, quickly. We had urgent purchases with that last grant where we had 30 days to make a purchase. That would be urgent in my definition. So those are, they should be rare, and I think that's why there's language in there that if we ever were to do that, we notify you immediately. We had that in New Boston where I did exceed the credit card limit, and I notified New Boston, but we needed to do that simply because we had, we had two weeks to procure things and we needed to use the credit card because it would have taken too long to get a check and for the check to get cashed, and we had to order things like really quickly. So those would be my examples, I guess, of an urgent purchase.
So would it be, I know we kind of talked about this limit quite a bit, and I'm just wondering, would it be prudent to put the limit up or to maybe define, or I'm not really going to define, but put a limit on urgent purchases as well? I'm just curious, like I'm just, I just learned from Dan one thing in the last six years is that you really have to be careful with language and policies. And I just wonder if we could maybe put like some parameters around it or if anybody else feels that way. I mean, if not, we can let it go, but.
I can pipe in.
Go ahead, Dan.
Sure. Go ahead, Dan.
The, we did talk about the $50,000, and Scott sent out to us in charge of some of the other school districts. And some of the other school districts are close to half a million and more. And one of the reasons they do that is because they use that as a purchasing device because as what they call the P-card program, they're getting rebates. They're getting 1%, 2%, and sometimes more money back on those purchases, which is like a cash discount for paying early. As far as putting a limit on emergency purchases, I think we did that anyway by whatever credit limit is available on there. So. But you're kind of right in that if we need to buy something and we put a limit and it's just over the limit, then we can't do the emergency. So I'm.
Right.
I'm toyed with you at the same time to saying, okay, $1 million is the limit. I'm just throwing a number out. I'm not suggesting that. But the rarity of having to use it in a plan, perhaps that's not a bad idea of putting a limit on emergencies. Is that okay? Do you have a suggested amount that you're thinking about?
I guess I would look for administration for guidance. And I guess that was kind of my, going to be my follow-up question.
Yeah.
If, you know, what was, what did we exceed in the past? Like Scott, you said that we, I know we had to do that, quick spending with that grant, but so what was that amount?
I, I guess if I, can I backtrack and give an answer to what Dan's question was?
Yeah, go ahead.
The limit, in my opinion, is our credit line limit, which is $100,000. And that would be the absolute limit that's there. But, you know, it's so hard to predict. And one of the things that I thought was very important, and I learned this especially with the New Boston situation, was that I just, we were not, because New Boston did what they did, we were not hamstrung in terms of buying things. I don't know how we would have procured everything that we did in the month of December if we didn't have the credit cards and that extra line of credit and the flexibility of this policy. So I just, sometimes you inadvertently hurt the ability to conduct business under weird circumstances when you do that. Unless you want to call a special meeting to go and procure, you know, $50,000 worth of Promethean boards or something. I don't, and that's kind of what you sometimes face. But the upper limit, Dan, would be 100, and that could always be.
Right now, because that's our credit limit.
Yeah, so that you could never go higher if you tried.
We can't exceed that anyway.
Exactly. So that would be your.
I'm good with that, for sure. I don't want to interfere with the business at all. But thank you for that input, and you know, definitely, that's exactly one of the lines of your, thanks for the clarification.
Thanks, Janelle.
So what you could do is you could amend this policy in that 1, 2, 3, that fourth paragraph, "Credit limits per card will be no more than $50,000 with an aggregate line of credit of $100,000." Okay? And.
Okay. Okay, is everybody good with amending that? Ellen?
However, if that line of credit changes, then we have to amend the whole policy.
No, because what will happen is I'd have, if I want a higher limit, okay, line of credit, I have to then go to this board and request it, and then you'd have to vote on it, and then you'd also vote to amend the policy at the same time. Do you follow what I'm saying?
So why can't we just say, instead of a number, say, the limit is the credit line limit, period.
Yeah, the current line of credit.
Current line of credit.
Current line of credit.
Without a dollar.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
By reference.
Yeah.
All right.
But then again, that is, it is what it is. Putting the words in there doesn't make it, I guess it does make it as plain that you can't go higher, but you can't go higher.
Right.
Right.
But it's not anything lower either.
Right.
So Ellen, will you amend?
I'll move to, we already have a motion, right?
Yeah, you made the motion. Will you amend your motion?
I'll move to amend my motion to include in the policy that the limit of this policy is the line of credit amount at any given time.
Okay. And Rheta, will you second that?
Yes. I don't know if that's right wording for the policy. I don't know if somebody needs to wordsmith that, but the concept, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
I agree with Rheta. I think we may want to wordsmith that. The, maybe the policy committee could have the authority of wordsmithing what the school board votes here.
Okay.
Add to my amendment.
And we can bring it back to the full board. We can make it, we can put it in place, come back with the verbiage that we came up with on the 25th.
Yes.
Is that the date?
Yep.
And we'll bring it to you in the beginning of February for the wordsmithing. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. All right, so we should continue with this motion and then bring in the policy.
Pending the policy committee's review and resubmission to the board. How's that?
That's good.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Looks confused. Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather. So this is going to go back to the policy committee with this verbiage, and we will fix it and bring it back to you guys for approval of the verbiage on January 25th, Denise. Okay, so next policy is EFR, student meal accounts.
This is Janelle. I hate to be in pain, I have a question on this one, please.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Another clarification on the emergency lunch. I know that you guys have said it before, and I just was wondering if you, you know, humor me and tell me one more time with, it says the emergency lunch is to include sun butter sandwich and like sides, and I'm assuming the sides are fruit and veggie, is what I remember, I think, and milk.
And milk.
And milk.
Including chocolate, Mr. Cludier.
If they're allergic to sun butter. And if they're allergic to sun butter, there's another option for them?
There's cheese or tuna.
Two cups of milk, chocolate.
Yeah, there's cheese or tuna. As their other sandwich.
Okay, I remember seeing that from the high school, but I wasn't sure for the little guys. Just wanted to be sure.
Mr. Gross?
Do we know for the little ones?
The way that it's written, it just says sun, it just says sun butter. So if you wanted to amend that to be the same for elementary and middle school, I don't know. I haven't, this never has come up, so I don't, I just have never had, I'd have to have Megan weigh in on it if that's what you wanted. I haven't heard, Brian, maybe you have, I have not heard from Megan any issues with the emergency lunches that we have provided at all in my two and a half years here. And I think Megan does a good job with that, so I don't know if you want to amend something if there's no issues.
If there's no issues, is it, I just wanted to make sure that it was available. I don't care about the verbiage, honestly.
Okay, yeah.
Well, maybe I do because I'm not here, so maybe it's really not that important, but it's just a little, a little, you know, knowing enough people who are allergic to all kinds of stuff, sometimes like to see that. And I know it does say it in the middle school, high schools, people might read on, do not know it, whatever. Not a huge deal at all, whatever the board says.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Do they have cheese and tuna sandwiches every day at the elementary and middle schools?
Don't know.
I think they do the sun butter at the elementaries.
Yeah.
But I would, I would need to confirm that with Megan. I think it's the sun butter.
Right, I wouldn't want to add cheese and tuna to elementary and middle school if it's not available.
Right.
Hey, somebody go to the store and get a can of tuna, quick!
So.
We have chocolate milk, and that's good.
So do we want to table this until we get some information from Megan? Or do you guys want to let it go, or what's the?
I'm okay with approving the regulation.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what did she say?
She said she was okay with approving this regulation as is. All right, so.
Move to approve regulation EF-R.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Janelle, second.
And I just had a question, too.
Go ahead.
Another question. I was just wondering, and I assume this doesn't really happen, but I was wondering about the next line right before the red writing, where parents, or just talked about the superintendent or designated reserve the right to withdraw emergency meal certificates on case that is wasted. I'm just curious what that, like an example of maybe what that would entail.
Well, we've never had that before. It's never occurred.
I figured.
Yeah, so it would have to be, and I would think it would have to be some kind of really unique set of circumstances that could include. I don't even know. I mean, I, we want to take care of kids, so.
Right.
I figured.
I can't even imagine, you know. If there was a dispute about someone misrepresenting residency, you know, it would take something of that level. And even then, we're still going to.
Take care of kids.
We're going to still take care of the kids.
I'm going to feed the kids.
Yeah.
Right, I know, and I figured as much.
Yeah, it's never come up.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any other discussion before I do roll call? All right, Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. All right, the last one is JFAB, admission of non-resident students. Any question, comment, or if not, a motion to move it forward?
I'm going to.
Move it forward.
All right, Janelle makes that motion to move it forward. Do I have a second?
By move it forward, she means to approve.
Yes.
Okay.
Janelle just said she, so you're seconding?
Yeah.
All right, Ellen seconds. Any discussion, anything before I do roll call?
Just.
Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
So as it's being read now, if somebody moves out in April in their graduation year, we're expecting them to pay tuition for the remainder of that school year.
Correct.
If they're a senior already.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, he's saying April senior year.
April senior year, you're going to be graduating in a month and a half. We're still going to require them to pay tuition in order to graduate.
That would, yes.
If they stay, want to stay in.
Based on this policy.
Right. If they want to stay in the school. Ginny?
Why are we changing this? Because I know forever, um, initially, we had, they could stay their whole senior year tuition free, and now we're adding, um, tuition even for a month. Um, what is, what is the change based on?
Well, it was discussed in policy, Dan, you can chime in anytime. Um, this policy was done so many years ago, and it was decided to at least have a conversation about it. Tuition has gotten very expensive, and if somebody chooses to leave, it, didn't feel that the Goffstown residents should have to keep paying for a senior to, to stay.
How often does this happen?
I don't know, because we don't get.
Probably four times a year. You have to say four? Does that feel about right? I'd say between two and, two and five, so around four.
What's the average cost that we're assuming?
Well, if you just look at street tuition cost, you're looking at around $14,000 for the year. The former policy didn't have any sort of specificity around when the senior year began, so that was something that I had asked the policy review committee to consider. Are you considered a senior the day after your last day of your junior year? Is it after the school year starts? Um, so we've had circumstances that people moved right after school had gotten out of their, say, their junior year, and then technically, they would be ascending seniors, and the policy was unclear. So, I think that was part of the rationale, was to, you know, at least, you know, define what that time period is, or, you know, and I, I would say, in addition to, you have to think about all of the students that you could potentially serve, including students that might have unique needs, or, um, extenuating circumstances, extra costs. So, I, I think that, you know, to make a policy decision without the emotionality of a child, a student, a set of circumstances for a family, it's better to do this when it's abstract.
Are all these students students that leave at the beginning of the year, or are they students that leave at different points of the year?
I'd say they, they leave at different points of the year, but I, I think our pattern has been, people know this exists, and so as soon as they're not a junior anymore, they're, they're asking for permission to do this. So, the majority that we get, we get over the summer. It's, it's typically not the April, you know, of the senior year type set of circumstances. We, we've found, and I, I think earlier and earlier, really, because it used to be that we'd wait till school started and then have the requests, these requests are coming, you know, the day after school gets out.
Ellen?
The purpose of this is saying that if a child leaves, and I'm looking at senior who's a resident here with, either way, they will, from now on, if this passes, be paying tuition to the end of the school year, regardless of when they leave.
If they're, yeah, if they're a senior.
Okay.
We're talking, well, this is specifically for seniors.
Yeah.
So, if they want to stay in Goffstown School as a senior to graduate, that's fine.
But they're paying tuition.
But they would have to pay tuition.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dan.
And I believe, do we not have another policy that allows the superintendent to talk to the new superintendent of that student, to see what's in the best interest, and whether that other school district wants to give some money to Goffstown for that student to remain in Goffstown rather than the new district?
Right.
We, we have that policy that is also afforded in RSA 193-3.
Yeah.
And it can't happen without school board approval.
That was another consideration.
Right, thank you, Dan.
I'm fine.
No, go ahead, Alan, did you follow?
No, no, it said, it also, the student, to continue here, needs school board approval. It says that in there, so I'm fine with this. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Ginny, go ahead.
I know, um, every year, we hear of multiple early senior graduations. Are these ever, um, any of these, these students outweighed by the?
Oh, like, like an early graduation request.
The students with the early graduation request?
I can't think of. Yeah, I, I, I don't think that's been our experience. Our graduating early students are typically kids that are either, um, going in the, in the, to the military, they're going into, they want to go to college early, or they have unique circumstances that they're moving, leaving, you know, trying to get ready for college, saving, paying, but most of our early graduations are either military-bound students, or kids that are already looking to enroll in typically a two-year college program.
But they're leaving a part of the year, leaving room for maybe?
At least a semester.
Maybe these kids to?
And, and sometimes a full year. We do have.
Yeah.
Um, situations that we have, you know, juniors who graduate early, and we tend to support those. I would say the, the number of those that I haven't supported has been three or four for unique circumstances that we collectively didn't think that it was in the best interest of the student, but they're, they're rare. And we probably have maybe two early graduation requests a year, two or, two or three? Does that feel about right? Not very many.
Do you have anything else? Oh, go ahead, Rheta.
Um, and I think Scott had his hand up, too.
Oh, did you? Sorry, Scott.
I just, I just had a quick question. Is the intent here that it would be done, this would be immediate, or is this such a policy where you would want it to make it effective July 1st, 2021? Because you could have somebody right now who moves out, and they really, I'm not saying they weren't afforded that, that benefit of the doubt, but it might be more palatable if it, if there was an implementation date that was out a little bit, maybe?
Right.
I don't know, just a thought.
That makes sense, to start it, the, if this goes through, to start it.
To start it.
July 1 of 21.
July 1st, 2021.
I would feel more comfortable, too, if it didn't come down to like a month or two months that people had to pay. That's just, that's just really too stiff of a penalty for, I mean, if, if you're a senior and you're getting ready to start the rest of your life, which is going to be expensive, it seems kind of silly to have to pay tuition to finish up your high school, um, in a place where you're used to being, where you want to finish your, you know, your lifelong schooling, and then have to pay $3,000, $4,000, whatever, $1,000 before you continue on to college, or trade school, or whatever. That just seems to be expense that's, um.
I'd be willing to amend my motion.
I don't know, really a hardship at that point.
Yeah, hang on one second. Dan, did you have something?
I, I did, only that, as a counterpoint to that, that's the parent's decision. If the parent wants to make that decision, if you're suggesting that there be like a number four here, because number three talks about, um, coming in early without paying your taxes, or perhaps, you're, you're trying to think of something, we could discuss that for, you know, a short period of time.
Well, I just think this is a huge leap, from going from all of these years paying nothing, to all of a sudden going down to paying for every single minute of the senior year. I think maybe we could just maybe do a partial, and then full if you want to, um, I just, I just think what I said before, um, going into the senior year and having to pay this much money for months, uh, you know, several months, maybe, is, is just difficult for a kid. And I know parents make decisions, but sometimes decisions are made for parents also, um, which is difficult for kids. So, you know, that doesn't always ring that parents have made decisions that, okay, too bad, you know? Just my thoughts, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Ginny. Hang on one second. Uh, Jared has his hand up. Hang on one second.
I believe Rheta was first, before me.
Oh, Rheta, did you have your hand up, too?
Well, it, it was, going back to what Ginny was saying, is if, I mean, I, I don't know what all these circumstances are, and I know they always come up, and it, and it takes a lot of time to make the decision, but if we're down to like a month or two before graduation, what's the likelihood that they would transfer to a different school? Um, and could they be successful? And I suppose that would be a conversation that would happen between the superintendents. I just, it, it, it just sounds like when you're getting down to the wire of the last few months of school, if a change happens.
Right.
So, anyways, it's just a, a question.
All right, Jared, go ahead.
From my recollection, I, I believe this policy did start when we asked the question, when does somebody become a senior? Is it their last day of their junior year, or is it when they walk through the door of their senior year? Uh, if this policy is moved forward as it is, I'll be voting no on this, because I believe that this also promotes the availability for students to become legally homeless. Their parents would move away, but they would want to stay in the school system. They would say that they're homeless or living with a friend, and that way that they would still get their tuition covered through some truancy laws. So, I believe this policy is doing the exact opposite of what is it that we're trying to do, and I am a fiscal conservative, but I do not believe that this policy really is in the best interest of our children.
My turn?
Go ahead, Dan.
The policy was directed to, I think, financially, for those who are paying for that. I don't think I'm adverse to discussing an item four that would allow for some specific time that we can, so, it, it, right, so it's now late April, and the parents decide they're gonna move out of Goffstown, for whatever reason, there are a lot of reasons, but for whatever reason, do we want to allow for some period of time, and I would be looking for those who are a proponent of that, to come with, with this. You can refer this back to the committee. The committee can come up with some language, or we can do it tonight, that would allow for the continuation of tuition free for a certain period of time.
At the end of the year?
At the end of the year, and if, if, um, for the next piece, for, for Jared, the definition of a high school graduate is, is gonna be in policy IKF.
Right.
Which is the next one on the PDF that Denise sent us. And it's, and it's referenced from this document. That's how we put them together.
All right, thank you, Dan. Uh, Ellen, you had your hand up?
Yes, two things.
Yeah.
Um, I would, I would not be adverse to putting, sending this back to the policy committee, um, to look for the language that they're looking for, but also, I'd like to see an effective date.
When it would start.
Put on it. Like, if this came back to us before the end of this school year, I'd say effective July 1, 2021.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so, um.
So, I think at this point, it probably should go back to the policy committee to discuss different language.
Okay, is there a motion on the table?
There is. Uh, Janelle made the motion, and you seconded.
I, I'll withdraw my second.
All right.
If Janelle withdraw her motion, and then move to table it and send it to committee.
Yeah, I'll, I'll withdraw the motion, move to table.
We don't need to table it if there's no motion on the floor.
Yes, we're just withdrawing the motion.
Okay.
We would have a motion and refer it back to subcommittee.
Move to send it back to subcommittee.
And what we're supposed to do with it.
All right, so who wants to make the motion to move it back to the subcommittee to?
I just made that.
You did, Ellen?
For the language, if they see fit, of, um, how?
Of tuition.
Um, I know, I don't want to set a date, um.
There's a calendar day, um, inference in number three. Would you like to continue the calendar day inference in a tuition-free setting? And if that is the option, or would it be better to have school days, because it has to do with snow days, which we will probably never have again, um, and what number should that be?
Okay, um, I, I don't want to make their decision for them.
Yeah, we'll do that.
I want the policy committee to do this. I'm just looking for if we want more detail in the motion to send it back, for the language as, uh, with regard to, how do I want to put this? Certainly want an effective date, but, um.
It's a grace period in which it would be tuition free.
A grace period? End of year grace period, for the subcommittee to determine.
Okay.
How's that sound?
That sounds good. So, Ellen made that motion. Do I have a second? By Ginny. All right, any other discussion? Not, I'm gonna do roll call.
So, we're not approving this, we're just taking it back to committee.
Correct.
I'm hearing the motion debate.
Yep. Um, Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. All right, so, that will go back, um, to the subcommittee, and hopefully that'll be able to come, well, to see what the agenda is, to bring it back in February.
Heather, just, so you know, just on this topic, SAU 16, I was just looking at some different school district policies.
Yeah.
Has a fairly good policy for you to look at.
Okay.
And it addresses timeframes in terms of marking periods, and after the certain date, it would be considered for non-tuition.
Okay.
So, it's pretty decent.
All right, good, we'll look at that. All right, thank you. All right, so now we're getting on to new business, um, so we need board authorization request. I need a motion to, a board motion is needed to grant continued authorization to the superintendent under the superintendent's emergency operations plan for COVID-19, as a temporary regulation to policy EBCF, pandemic epidemic emergencies, and to grant the superintendent or his designate authorization to respond at his or her discretion to changing public health circumstances, and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt school policy as needed until the next successful school board meeting.
So, move.
All right, by Ellen, do I have a second? By Ginny, I'll do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Next is a motion to grant the business administrator authorization to make payments out of sequence, and to notify the board of such payments at the next scheduled school board meeting. Do we have a motion?
So, move.
By Ellen, second by Rheta. Roll call, Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So, now we move on to school staffing.
So, you should have received the staffing sheet. We just have, uh, two notifications, one for a leave of absence for Suzanne Price from Bartlett, and one for a long-term substitute, which actually will be covering Mrs. Price's leave for Molly Goldstein, and then for your approval. Uh, we are pretty excited, I haven't had the chance to meet her yet, but Annie Lewis will be a new special education teacher for us. She has been in that role, um, as a long-term sub since, um, the end of December, so if the board is so inclined to approve, um, this position as we're recommending, I would to say was the week before Christmas, but she might as well get her, her salary for those days, it seems fair.
Move, move to approve the recommendations as submitted.
Seconded.
All right, second by Jared. Does that cover the retro, Ellen?
Yes, as submitted.
All right. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Jared.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes.
Thank you.
So we're unanimous, you're welcome. Yes?
I have a question. Brian, I think last time we talked about, you had a plan of trying to hire long-term substitutes, um.
We're still trying.
For substitutes. So you're still, is this young lady, the music teacher, she's not one of those? She's, um, filling a position?
This, so for the, the notification at the top?
Um, yes, yeah.
So that, um, this request came in prior to the change in the statute, so I don't know if this one would, would have played out differently, but Kate has processed this and this is an unpaid lead.
Okay. And you, but you are continuing your, your idea of continuing to keep long-term substitutes?
We're pretty lucky, Molly Goldstein, some of you might, might know that name. Family has, has been part of our, our school community for a long time. Molly worked for us at Al Ted as a tutor. She's done some strings instruction. She's a standout musician, great, great kid. We're lucky to be able to plug her into that music role and those kids will have a great experience for that month.
Okay.
All right, any other business that may legally come before the meeting?